All right, seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and begin our council meeting February 25th, 2020. And, thank you for that. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We'll begin our meeting tonight with opening remarks from Corey. And then, Dave, will you do the pledge for us?
Thank you, Father in heaven. We come before this evening, Father, in humble thanks and gratitude for the blessings that we have. We are so grateful we can gather together here as members of this community to talk about those things of importance. We ask, Father, you will help to guide us in our decision-making. Please help everybody to understand what would be best to improve El Craig and to make it the best place possible and help guide our hand always to do what we can to be better neighbors and friends with those that we live with in this area. Lord, very much, Father, we do ask for these blessings at this time. Do so in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right. Please take the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Now I can give a motion to approve the agenda timeframe. So, is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Let's do a roll call. Corey, you'll start with you tonight.
Here.
Say your name.
Say your name, buddy.
Corey Thompson.
Teresa Thomas.
Tile Nelson Avenue.
Jim Chase.
Yeah, we got a wild one, don't we? All right, public forum. Do we have anybody to sign up, Royce, for public forum tonight?
No, sorry.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public forum. Now, we're gonna go into first item of business, which is to ratify the poll vote for the SL rap system, the $13,500 expenditure that we want to make to license the sewer rap.
Rapid assessment tool.
Rapid assessment tool. So, we need to ratify that, ratify that vote. And please make sure that you vote the way you voted on the, when you responded to my email.
If you respond with your email.
We have to roll call on that ratification. We do, Jim, we'll go start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Justin.
Aye.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, next item of business is the smart annexation ordinance. You have before you this ordinance and right now the ordinance is drafted as an R1, 12,000 residential zoning and C1 commercial zone. So, it pretty well stays true to the general plan with the exception of lotsized down to 12,000 square feet. Any discussion on this before we take, have a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If they choose to not do commercial, is that an option or is it if we accept it, commercial unless the commercial?
It'll be zoned as commercial and just add the upper general plan.
Okay, I just didn't know.
I was about to say that we couldn't come back and ask.
Yeah, it gets up to the property owner if they want to go.
They can try again. That's what this is.
They could have it rezoned.
They could come and ask for it.
Ask for the future, right?
Okay, okay.
In here, it doesn't specify how much or anything. It just says, let's just use zones of the implement and whatever.
It just refers to Exhibit A, which we've seen previously, which I think it shows, it shows measurements on that, it shows it on the, the whole property. It shows the commercial size of it.
Which is like eight acres? Did I make that up?
The concept plan that we showed, yeah, had roughly 10.6 acres of residential and it had 8.9 or something like that of commercial.
That's not certain, Stone.
Correct, but that was kind of what our best guess is.
Concert.
Right.
Yep, but this definitely goes forward with the annexation with the anticipation that those residential lots will be 12,000, no bigger.
And we're going to encourage, didn't we talk about this? Water conservation?
Well, that was more around the commercial. We're not gonna do anything different than what everybody else has right now. That's what I understood.
I motion, we approve ordinance number 20-3. Do you have any other voice?
Oh, we're just motioning to move into public hearing for the ordinance.
Oh.
No, that's okay, hang up for a minute.
Come back in the day later, two more links.
Yeah, they won't. If you want this.
Have to go to planning commission.
I motion that we approve it to go to planning commission.
Can we?
No.
Second.
Well, before you second it, I want to make sure that, you want to say anything at this point in time, Nelson, or are you okay?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I do want to say something. I think that it doesn't make sense to put a buffer if the buffer is bigger than the homes. If you're going from commercial to larger lots to then smaller lots, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Right.
I want the planning commission to know, but I feel that if you're gonna create a buffer, the lot should either be the same size or smaller than the lots that are already adjacent to this property. Otherwise, I just, I don't see it, so.
Okay, number out there.
Yes.
We, when we proposed this, that is the smallest that you currently have in the code?
I recognize that. And I would, I would actually prefer that they come back and say, let's match what's better. I think.
What's right there? Isn't it close to one?
It's 10.
It's 10. But that was also with the PUD, which we no longer have, correct?
Correct.
We took it out.
Yep, it's taken out code, but I still.
So, if we do that smaller lot then?
I just wanted to give Nelson an opportunity to say his piece, because I knew what he wanted to say, before we second it and voted.
I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna also be on there that I think a buffer, as you go to commercial, it increases density.
But is your.
In one way or another.
Is your suggestion also to?
Are you gonna withdraw your motion?
No, we're sending the planning commission to review it.
Proposed and that's what.
I'm just trying to get some direction so the planning commission takes a good hard look at this in the end of the hearing, but perhaps they'll take that into consideration.
What would be their option to just say no and not do the annexation because there's nothing else they can do? What would be the option? I'm just curious.
Well, this is a, effectively a blank slate. As part of the annexation, we can kind of dictate some of those terms.
Right.
And we can come in and say, this is how it's gonna be, because when the entire PUD was brought in, we didn't even have the code effectively in place. It was contingent upon all of that happening and the annexation went through and then the code was, was written to, to pull that all together.
So, would you suggest reinstating the PUD?
No.
You'd like smaller lots?
I'm not saying that, because frankly, the PUD stopped. I mean, we, we got stuck with property that we have to maintain that is pointless. And I don't want more property. I mean, if he comes in and he puts in 7,500 or 10,000 square foot lots, I don't want him to give us open space or have open space that ultimately we could be, end up having to be responsible for.
The rule under the PUD too, as the math worked out to where it actually worked out, a third acre lots, just some of it was open space. This actually gives them more density than the PUD if you look at it.
But I, but I don't think it's fair that you get rid of the PUD and then you allow the smaller lots again, but they don't have to pay in lieu or do, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we got rid of the PUD, because we didn't want any more parts.
So, 12,000 is allowable underneath.
Yeah, which is, which is what we're saying yes to, which I'm fine with, but if you want to lower it, I'm saying, I don't know that I think that's fair to those that have done it before. I'm making that statement.
I'm just saying traditionally, that's how it should be, but.
So, let's send it to the planning commission and then all can have an argument with the planning commission, but I'd like to get this passed through here, because we're not gonna solve it.
Nope.
So, is motion on the table to move this ordinance to the planning commission?
I'll second it. Or unless Jim's already seconded.
Jim's already seconded.
I'm gonna give him credit for it. That's fine.
Okay, and so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
Off it goes.
Thank you.
When is their planning commission meeting?
On the 5th of March.
Okay. Parkside Cove lots nine and 10 exception. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the situation that was discovered on phase three, isn't it phase three? Phase four?
Three.
Three?
Well, actually, no, this one's phase two, isn't it?
Phase two.
Yeah.
So, there's a, they found out that we have an easement, there's a water line in the, it's not in the center of the easement, it's on the.
We have three water lines.
Three water lines. The closest one would actually be a couple of feet from.
The edge of a home.
The edge of a home. On our, is it the distribution line or is it the pump line?
No, I think that's the pump line.
So, anyway.
We have two pumps.
So, what we want to do is put an exception for the two homes, nine and 10, is that the ones?
Correct.
To allow them, instead of a 20-foot distance between the homes, we use down to a 10, 10-foot, 12-foot.
According to this. And you're moving them both together or?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the one home can move closer to, closer.
So, they're getting closer, but they're still on the same amount of land and stuff? You're just moving them closer so you can get by?
Well, just so it's not so close to our water line, because if we have a problem with that line, we have room to deal with it.
Yeah, we're loudly moving the home. In order for them to move the home away from the line, they have to move closer to the.
To the other.
So, that's why they need the exception. They need the exception. Is there any other, so, I mean, it makes perfect sense to me, because we want access to the water. Is there anything else that needs to be considered by moving those two homes closer together?
The only other thing would be a fire issue. I talked to Chief Wake about that, just because of closer move radiant heat, you can easily catch another home on fire.
Sure.
With the, with the issue that we could have with a broken line excavating under a home and causing a collapse, it would be better to not have that as much of a problem as dealing with the home fire. Well, no.
That's fire.
No, because we can, we can do everything, we can protect it, right? We can, we can put up a good fight there, but anyway, that was the only thing that I could think of.
It just does not jeopardize the IBC.
Well, the IBC, if it gets to a certain distance, it'll start dictating fire separation and stuff on exterior.
Right.
So, that'd be part of the planner view on that.
That would have to be poetic justice.
Sure would be.
I don't know what that is.
Then I guess with it kind of being condoized or something, I guess they would shift that property line that goes through the middle of the house with it, or, I assume that would go with it, right? But that would all come through on a planner view, right? He hasn't done, he hasn't issued a permit for the.
He does have a permit.
So, I think they need to reevaluate the fire separation on the outside, see if that comes into play, and redo the survey or whatever you call it for that, that shared wall.
Because the footprint's gonna move. So, it's probably gonna be resurfaced.
Is this our mistake or?
No, it's nobody's, because we're in our easement, they're on the outside of our easement. They legally can build up to our easement, right? So, we're asking them to move.
So that we can access it. Does, but Shay recommended this, so wouldn't he know what the, didn't he check every?
Well, I think in the motion, we just have to state, right, the.
Contingent on a meeting?
Any IBC building standards that, to the proximity of the next home?
Yeah, I mean, sorry, I'm not trying to screw this whole thing up, but I'm asking, anytime you're moving the whole homes around, it's great that we get in the pipeline, just to make sure we're not creating another problem. That's the only reason I was asking the question.
Well, I see, I think the fire is the, the one we gotta make sure that we get covered on, because if it's gonna cost him a bunch more money to build for fire separation, then.
Then he'll just say, I'm gonna just build where I can build.
That's what I was gonna say, I'm gonna stop, it's decided then. No, actually, build right.
So, this just allows him to move it. It doesn't, he doesn't have to.
In the end, no.
Right? He doesn't have to.
Yeah, but if he doesn't move it and there's a problem, we're digging the foundation out from right next to those homes, I'm sure the owner's not gonna be too thrilled with that.
I'm sure he's gonna move it, right?
Well, that must cost him a lot more.
Yes. I mean, because Shay says the line, the line currently is two and a half feet from the foundation. I mean, that's, is that even another, you'd have to be digging that by hand, right? That's so close to the.
Well, two.
Two and a half feet?
No, it can still be to put something in there and dig it, but it's, just.
You know, the house is.
Yeah, it's just, you got a wall.
It's not the digging.
You just suck it out, the vacuum.
It's actually the, the break itself that will cause.
That's the problem.
Flooding that hole.
Well, you can undercut that hole and have a collapse.
That'll cost us a lot.
Should I make a stat of this now?
Sure, go for it.
Yeah, it's all you, Jerry.
Well, you wouldn't let me do the last one. So, we, I propose that we approve moving the homes on units nine and 10 as stated in the letter with the reevaluation of IBC code, fire code, et cetera, and also, you know, the owner knowing that he needs to redo survey or, or whatever for property line. That works.
Well, you basically.
Or anything else that may resolve.
Well, you basically made a motion to tell him to move the home.
Okay. Because really, what we're looking for is an exception to.
Allow him if he so desires.
Why would he have to, he has to move the property line?
It's a twin, it's a twin reason. So, if you move the home, you're gonna, you got that shared.
You got that shared line that.
The line that goes down between the homes has to move.
So, I think, I think what you did is an exception to the senior housing overlay, right? That would have said.
Contingent on a meeting, IBC standards.
Traditions would be an exception to standard 20 feet culled on senior housing overlay zone. Because you've moved that, one guy's gonna have a bigger yard, the other guy has a smaller one.
On the PUD.
That's right. That's what happened. Otherwise, it's like when you get in a fight with a brother woman, you take the brother woman with the water.
Go for it.
No, I don't know. This one's all you, try it again.
I motion that we address the issue with lots nine and 10 as stated in the letter.
There we go, okay.
Along with anything that may impact it, code related, as adopted by any code.
No, look at Royce's face. Look at Royce's face. Roy, you can speak for the heart.
That got worse, I mean.
All right, go for it.
I didn't realize this was gonna take the longer part of the whole meeting.
Contingent on a meeting, IBC standards, your exception or whatever.
All right, let me see if I can do it. Let's motion.
No, you make, it's not let's motion, you make the motion.
I motion, I motion that we allow an exception from the standard 20 feet separation in the senior housing overlay zone for parkside Cove units nine and 10.
As stated.
As stated in the Shay Stark email dated February 25th, 2020.
Yeah, I have that.
Contingent upon any.
The meeting, IBC standards.
No, that's good enough.
I think we just leave it like that, it's gonna be an exception.
All right, we have motion on the table.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Woo. Good job.
Okay.
Flood damage prevention ordinance, so amongst all the paperwork we have, we have flood damage prevention ordinance 20-04. Basically, the same ordinance that we're under right now, we just need to extend the date, right? That we, did we change anything else in this?
We have not changed anything else, so this is, this motion's gonna go public.
To public hearing. It's a land use issue, so we have to go to public.
And we're just extending the date so we have time to hold the hearing? Is that why we're doing this?
No, the date, the, the ordinance that we're under right now expires in June, the end of June, June something, it's in here somewhere. This one extends it, extends it, right? So, we're re-upping on the same ordinance that we have.
So, this is a periodically renewable ordinance.
What's that?
This is a periodically renewable ordinance.
Yeah. Does this one expire again? Is it another year? You know?
I don't.
Why does, why do we have to renew this, Royce? Rookie question. Is there some reason it's only a temporary ordinance?
It's linked to the insurance.
To the insurance, yeah.
How about we renew this more than once already?
No.
Just once.
This'll be the first time.
With mapping and all that going on, we needed to renew it.
We did another something similar, no?
No, that was, that was a whole different reason.
Have to do flooding though, correct? Okay, I'm not crazy.
I don't see the date on this, Mary.
No, I'm not, I'm trying to find the date.
I don't see the date on it, but how are we supposed to extend it to?
You're dead to me.
Until they send this on the.
That's not this one, it's told to renew it.
But if it expires, there has to be a renewal period on it, right? I mean, is it one, once a year we have to do this, once every five years, like?
I swear the other one had the date.
I think it's until they send.
I don't understand.
Well, this one maybe.
We had the data, we had, give it a date.
I never saw a date in this. There's not. Date, date, date.
I like it without the date, because until further notice, right? Till we, till we decide to change it, that stays in effect, which I like.
Yeah, so, I don't know why we want to continually have to re-up this.
We may at some point have to relook at it if they map us, if FEMA maps the flood plane and that affects it, but up until that point, why would we want to have to deal with this again? Right? I just want, I just want our residents to be able to get their flood insurance and not have any, jeopardize that.
So, the only date in this whole thing is under section B, page seven to 14. The area of special flood hazard identified by FEMA in a scientific and engineering report entitled flood insurance study for Utah County dated June 19, 2020. So, is that the date that's concerned here? That's the day we're worried about? Flood insurance study for Utah County, June 19, 2020. It's right under section B on page, on page seven. Any revisions here too are adopted by reference in the clarity of party ordinance. So, I mean, this only, the only date in here references a study, a FEMA study, that's the only, but that doesn't even say, that doesn't appear to be.
That's not.
A bearing on this ordinance itself. That's everything. I, unless we have, unless there's any reason that we can't extend this indefinitely until we have to change it, I, I, why can't we do that?
That's exactly what we'd like to do.
Yeah, let's just make it permanent. Last year, didn't we enact this because we, all the homes?
That was the one that the treasurer was talking about.
Exactly, you already drafted, I swear it was the same thing.
That, that was to declare effectively, not really a state of emergency, but we had to make a declaration. By us making that declaration, it allowed everybody that was affected by the potential for flooding to be able to go in and have an open window where they could go in and apply for flood insurance and not be subject to waiting period. And that's what that was. That's just basically under the same agreement that development in the canyon would be, you know?
Well, unless you're.
We've already run the course on this one for the, the one we're under for that new home that's being built. Already gone around on that one.
That's different, because when they come in and map this, they give them a flood zone A, B, C, X, Y, or Z, depending on what you fall into.
Yeah.
And we don't have any area of our town that's specifically designed to say flood hazard. And all, and all, it looks like all this does is just set forth the rules if you're gonna modify the homes and flood zone, right? I mean, it gives the criteria by which you can make modifications to the homes, existing construction or reconstruction, flood floors, so.
And we've asked, we've talked to the residents, now they understand that it's kind of in a special situation.
It addresses flood areas, moving ground around and stuff, changing waterways. Yeah. That's all addressed in here, but we don't have any of that, so it's kind of moot point, but we gotta do all, because it's part of being. Part of the bigger picture.
It says it will be good, will be responsible, right? City for making sure that we don't aggravate the situation in the canyon.
I mean, and really, all this, it looks like all this is saying is that if somebody, if FEMA establishes a flood hazard, then a development permit will be required to ensure conformance with this ordinance. So, it looks like what it's saying is if they, if they establish a flood zone and somebody wants to build a house or modify an existing structure, they just have to ask the permission to do so.
Well, it also gives you an appeal in there, to actually appeal the, the change in the flood.
Okay.
It's, I don't, I think it's all insurance related.
I think we should cut insurance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for a motion if somebody wants to.
I would do it, but I give up.
Why? You're doing so great.
You know what? Get back on the horse.
You're nailing it, you're nailing it.
Get fucked up, get right back up on it.
Put your head on, you don't work. I make a motion, we approve ordinance 20-4.
No, sorry, we're just gonna go to public hearing.
It's just going to public hearing.
Okay, I make a motion, this goes, flood prevent, flood or damage prevention, not all tongue tied, prevention ordinance 20-4, we move to a public hearing.
Okay, got a second to move to public hearing?
I'll second it.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow. We okay over there? Roy, are you okay?
Yes.
All right, let's talk about the federal government tort claim. So, Royce, make sure I, I'll start us off.
You start us off and I'll.
So, there, we met with two individuals who, lawyers, right? That, are they not lawyers?
They're not lawyers.
What are they doing? Do you have their card?
Yeah, I have their card, they've lost this.
I don't have their card. Anyway, they, they presented to us the option that we can go down the path to submit a claim for damages and.
Against the PLM or something?
For, against the USDA, who is the parent committee over, parent organization over the NR, the natural resources, federal natural resources. Wildlife expert consultants. Anyway, so they've got experience in creating, in doing these claims against the federal government, and they apparently have been successful in the past making claims against the government, right? The trick is, you know, it's the same old thing. You go and you do a claim against them, and they say no, and then you say, well, we're gonna sue, and they say, well, let's just settle. And so, apparently, they've been successful in a number of cases. They've also been successful in the, in the, what was the fire name down there? Paradise that burned, that, that Pacific Gas and Electric?
DGME.
DGME.
What do they want to be paid for this?
So we, so we talked to them about what it would do and how long it would take and how they get paid, right? And their, their fee would be five thousand dollars for their time to, upfront. Five thousand dollars to initiate the claims, along with a two thousand dollar bill to do the GIS surveys that they need to make sure that they have all the mapping that they need for the area. That submits the claim, and then upon settlement, right? They would do three percent.
Three percent?
Yes, three percent of the settlement.
What's our claim against the government?
It is for damages that have occurred, necessary equipment that would be needed to maintain any structures that we have to build or anything that we do, any kind of equipment that we have to purchase, labor that has to go into it.
Or what?
For any...
Flood remediation?
For what? Flood remediation.
Is that what the, I mean...
From the fire?
Any damage that occurs from the fire, yes. This has to be filed against the Forest, I guess.
But only, only the city?
Huh?
Only damages to the city?
Damages to...
City things or...
Yeah. Not the community. But they can extend that to a lot of things, right? He's like, oh, man, you don't sleep at night? Yeah, I don't sleep at night. Well, then you have to be, you have to be compensated, right? I'm like, okay, well, whatever, right?
Can we be honest? Is this honest?
Well, okay, so here's where we are.
It might be.
This is where we are. They seem credible, right?
Yeah.
I would not engage in anything until we did investigating on what claims they have filed, their successes, anything.
I'm not worried about that.
Let's tell them they cover all the upfront costs and raise their contingency fee to four percent instead of three.
And they may, I don't know.
And we don't pay anything out of pocket. And that way, if they bundle it up, it's on them.
I'm not even, I'm less concerned about that, more concerned about, should we really be suing the government?
Yes.
Why? Because a fire happened, so we, they owe us something?
No, no, this is about changing the process and procedure that led up to that.
Are we talking about a city here and you know whether or not so why?
They will not change the way they do things.
So the way they behaved, right?
How did they behave?
I'm not talking about an individual because I think they followed policy. The policy was bad because they let the thing burn.
Well, that's...
Because that was their policy. Not when it's got arrows to get right to Elk Ridge in the south wind. That's bad policy, bad policy to do that in an extreme drought year. Think about it.
And their management of the forest up to that point, too.
Yeah.
You guys, come on.
The, the little fire burns.
Would you do this if it was your own thing? Because I, I feel like it's not honest.
If you're going to have to pay a million dollars?
We haven't.
You will. When this is all done and we have to maintain these channels and we have to, and we have to buy the equipment and everything else, you rack up bills really fast, and you're going to ready to pass that on to the residents.
If I lived down in the canyon, I'd be talking to these guys on my head.
They are.
Well, I'm just saying. I mean, that's where I would be if it's not a valid claim.
They've held a meeting with the residents.
They have.
I don't know how many have signed up with them.
Listen, whatever, we can, we can go through it, but... Since when is the government responsible for everything?
They're not, they're not. But they're negligent in this case. Their policy is bad. I'm not blaming any individual because I think the individuals probably follow policy.
Well, I've read the reports, they did, they followed the policy. Problem is, the policy stunk.
Right.
And the only way you're going to get the policy changed is if you're...
It's not going to change it. If they've been doing this and been successful, it's not going to change it. If you, that's the stance you're taking, I don't...
So here's what I would like to do. I want to engage with these folks. First of all, I want to do is vet them.
I want to see a legitimate claim.
I want to vet them.
Okay.
Right?
That's fine.
I think we owe that vetting, right? I think it would be awfully foolish of us to, after vetting them, to find out that, that they do in fact know what they're talking about here. They sounded very knowledgeable. That if we don't go down this path and we have the opportunity to reimburse the city for the effort and the equipment and everything else it takes to, to deal with this situation for the next... Ten, oh, ten years or whatever it is, fifteen years?
Plus, this isn't open-ended. We have two years from the event to file a claim against them, against the federal government.
Two years we have.
I mean, there are...
We're not against the timeline.
If we do that one thing, they're already giving us a million dollars. You know what I'm saying?
No.
You can, you can understand some of my concern. Come on.
None, I can't.
No, you can't?
No.
So, hey, I don't even...
Sue a million dollars?
Don't ever sue me for some unjust reason like it happens.
I think it would help address, honestly, I believe it would help address Trish's concern if they have to front the cost.
I actually don't think that.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you why.
I think it's dishonest to sue someone who needs to be responsible for their stuff.
If they don't have a valid claim, it's easy to file a frivolous suit if someone else is paying for it. But if it is a valid claim, like, for example, you guys know Brittany does this, she does contingency work all the time. She pays everything upfront. If somebody comes in with a claim that is not valid, they just won't do it because it costs them.
Yeah.
That's how, that's how I feel.
Well, and certainly these aren't the only folks who file a claim.
No, but what I'm suggesting is if you say, look, we're not going to give you seven thousand, we'll just increase your fee. If they have a valid claim and they win, they'll get reimbursed. If it's not valid, they'll be dissuaded from doing it because they'll have to eat that cost. Just a thought.
So...
Look into it.
So we'd like to, we, and that's great.
Just a thought.
No, we can look into that, but I think at the end of the day, this is, I'm feeling like this is a smart thing for us to do. We, yeah, we would put seven thousand on the line, but the return on that seven thousand could be very significant for us.
Well, how much did we have to pay for the FEMA grant that got denied? A few months?
Wasn't it eight thousand?
Uh, no, because they, they took a lot of that money and took it out of the, charged the work to the, to the current project they're on. Because they had to build the mapping and all that. So what did our bill come up, you know, for the grant?
It was like seventeen hundred or something.
Yeah. That was pretty good, they're very good for, very, very good to us on that.
All I'm saying is attorneys that work on contingency fee, the normal racket is you charge nothing when somebody comes in and you just get paid in the end if you want it. These guys would know that, they're not...
I agree with Corey.
They would know that, and if those attorneys, whoever the attorneys are filing the claim with, they're legitimate, they would probably be like, okay, fine, let's go ahead and do this thing.
Yeah, well, we can surely, we can surely get back with them, see what they say.
I want to know what they, I, I, listen, but I, I could be the only one that goes, no. But I just, I don't want to take more money than we should be getting just because we can. Because I don't think that's right. Does that make sense?
No. If it wasn't, if it was, the reason why I don't think it's frivolous is because we're going to pay it. We're not getting rich on this. We're reimbursed.
What have we had so far? What are our real costs? Because we've been reimbursed by a lot of different...
You bought property in the canyon.
Yeah, but we got reimbursed for that.
Yeah.
So, let's be clear here. Like, we don't need to keep taking from the government if we're not owed it. That's all I'm trying to say. I just want to make sure, I, I feel like it's honest. That's all I'm saying.
So how are you going to buy the equipment to maintain the channel?
Well, let's wait, I mean, we still have money from, right?
Money from where?
That we were given from the state of Utah.
Only for land.
Only for land.
We can't buy anything else. Everything else is coming out of it.
What about the other thing to dig out behind their houses? Are, are we allowed to buy anything to maintain that?
No, no.
And is it stuff we would use in anyway? I'm not saying we can't do it, I just, I don't want to go after something, never mind.
What I'm trying to say is...
We're not going to agree on this because I don't, I think my, what I think and what you think might just be different, and that's okay. But I just don't want to do, I don't want to do anything...
I don't know a better way to fund the, the million dollars. In addition to what we've already got from the NRCS for the next ten years...
You think this fire is going to cost the city more than two million dollars or a million, one point six million dollars?
One million, one million dollars to do the channel.
That would be given from the government.
That's to create the channel, that's it. And if we don't, if we don't create the channel, we don't get the money.
And then that means we don't have any money for any future projects, like building a retention pond or enclosing and...
Okay, but if that's, that's on those citizens, if they decide not to do that, that's not my fault. And that's not the federal government's fault, so why should they have to pay for that?
No.
Can I make a comment?
No, we're not talking that.
The Forest policy of let it burn is under a lot of political attention right now. And the Forest Service knows that they don't want to bring this before the public, so they do not want a lawsuit. Because if it comes before the public, they will have to change it. So their process is, is that we submit a tort claim, and two years from now they deny it, and then we resubmit it legally, and then they say, we're not going to go before the public, we're going to settle. And so they work the case out and they settle it because they don't want to pay the full price of having their policy changed. Okay? This is the only way that people can get money for the damage that the government does to their citizens because they let it burn, and it's the only way. And so, in this case, this is a tort claim which allows the government to actually give less money to solve the problems and, and take care of the people and their losses. Okay? Otherwise, they could actually lose a lot more. But it's the only way to get remediation at all from the government, and that is their official process. And they will receive it in, and in two years, they will deny it because they don't think we're going to submit it. You submit it again, and they will...
But just because you know someone will settle doesn't make it right to do it. And I just think the difference is, I don't necessarily think it's the government should have to pay for stuff. I think we should be, we should take care of ourselves. And you say, and that's okay, we can, we can agree to disagree. I don't, but I don't know that I disagree with them.
If we were taking care of it ourselves, we would have gone up there and put the dang fire out.
But they need to have all those people come too. Like, you guys act like they just like left us high and dry. They didn't.
No, they didn't, no, 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 no.
They've already, they've already spent a ton of money on this.
But now the fire is over and we're staring down the barrel of a loaded gun with a canyon that's ready to just blow wide open, and we've got little to no resources to handle it. This is our, this is our best chance.
I know, they're only giving us like a million and something dollars for a lifeline, but you're right. Come on.
You're, you're confusing two things. You're confusing the remediation for the homes, right? With the long-term maintenance of whatever they do do and whatever happens in the canyon.
Okay.
Wait, so you're going to get that one first?
You're not going to, you're not going to agree with me. Why, why would the city allow someone to build in a canyon? Part of me says that's them.
Even if there's no home down there, we got well in there, we've got roads in there.
But I'm saying like that... It's fine, it's fine, we don't have to agree, and I can be the only one that doesn't agree with it. I just, I don't know how you guys don't see anything of what I'm saying that maybe, just because you can doesn't make it right. That's all I'm saying.
The only thing I'm saying is that...
Just because we can get money doesn't mean we should.
There was no, there was no action on our behalf that caused the problem.
No, but life happens.
It does happen.
So, that's part of life.
If your house lost fifty percent of its worth in this single event...
I wouldn't go up to the federal government.
You wouldn't go to the federal government because they burned down your house?
They didn't burn down my house. If my house lost half of its worth, that is not the government's fault. Like, that's life. Like, the government doesn't owe, it's a difference of opinion. I don't believe the government would owe me anything. That's just my luck.
The, the fire caught, burned off the hill, it caused the water to come four times more frequently. Instead of a hundred here, it's twenty-five hundred here, we have a flood, it's going to flood the canyon. Right now, you cannot sell a house for half the price of it. And it is not the residents that did it.
No.
So I guess where we are right now, sorry.
Okay, let's just do it.
Where we are right now is, we're going to go back and we're going to talk these a little bit further, right?
It won't hurt to ask questions.
I said that, I said let's ask questions, but I'm saying I think there's a fundamental difference in beliefs here that like I, we can argue all day and I don't think we're ever going to agree. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's okay.
Like, we just see things differently, and that is okay.
But that's where we are. We're not asking for the money right now.
No.
We don't, if we go down this path, and I don't, you know, we'll have to make a decision if they don't do it all up for, you know, if they don't, you know, front it all up, up front of cost. And then we do the four percent payment, right? Or whatever, whatever you... We'll come back and we'll have another discussion once we find out.
I do agree with you saying that, though. You're right, that, it sounds a lot more solid if you say you get this, but...
Yeah, so we'll do that.
They're not going to let...
You okay that way? We just want to let you know where we were, that we did meet with these folks. They seemed very legitimate. They seemed like this is not something that is a fly-by-night. This has been done many times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And I think we've been foolish not to take advantage of it.
City of Paradise wouldn't be rebuilding if they had gone down this path.
Well, and for what it's worth, you can't sue the federal government unless they allow it. So in a case like this, they'll allow it. If they're allowing it, then that means that they anticipated this and they expect we'd be responsible. Because if they weren't, then they could simply say, you cannot sue us, and that would be the end of the discussion. It's weird. Anyway, whatever.
Number six, urban wildlife management study.
Okay, so I've had several discussions with the urban, urban management guys. We had one with the mayor and Royce, with the gentleman, asked a lot of questions and whatnot, but anyway, so... My field, and I have a lot of citizens telling me that we have a deer problem, okay? City deer are different than mountain deer, now we go down that road or whatever, but basically, this group is the only group authorized in the state to do within city deer control. I think...
Of sorts, harvesting.
It's, it's, uh, so what it is, is they're, it's a state-approved, they have to submit a plan to the state, has to be approved. They're taking care of these cities already. The state actually likes them, the way that they have done it in the past, their tactics or whatever. To help formulate that, we have to have a count on the deer. Okay?
Good luck with that.
So he said there's two ways to do that. Us as the city can do the count.
Yeah.
Give them the number. Okay?
I have a great, a great way of doing that.
I'm going to run out of fingers.
Tell you my way of doing it.
Okay, so, um, we do the number, give it to him, on any basis his program is whatever that's catered to Elk Ridge to that. Or we pay him to do that study. He does it via cameras, drones, takes him among, I mean, pretty thorough.
How much does that cost?
I bet Nelson can do it in a week.
Okay, so, so, so we kind of, if, if we want to go down this path, we have two options to count the deer. And he wanted like twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars to do that.
You're welcome.
So...
I, I count them in a different manner than it's probably...
Our thought is, we'd, we'd like to, we'd like to get the deer counted before the end of this year's budget so he can formulate a plan, plan to the state so that, I guess their, their deer control can happen like from August till January. So he has time to push it through the state, there is a process. There would be public hearings, there would be ongoing stuff that would take months, probably a couple of months before he's able to...
Part of the plan is how many, how many deer he'll harvest.
Yeah, he has, and it's all based on a number.
A lot of times you find, they count deer multiple times because they wander from his yard to my yard.
Well, that's why I'm like, this is kind of freaking crazy.
So he does the drone thing to try to...
He does the drone, he does the count.
You start tagging them.
Paintball.
Well... So that was my plan. I think we have to give all the teenagers a paintball gun?
No, let's not. Let's not.
You give food, you give...
No, we would never give them paintball guns.
So, Jared, can I ask one question before?
I'll come to your house first. All right. Corey, go ahead.
So obviously, I mean, the intent of this, the ultimate intent of this would be to do a urban harvesting, right? I remember a few months back, I mean, we're, we're predating whether or not we should pay this guy twenty-five hundred bucks to count the deer, on the ultimate conclusion that we'll decide to kill them in the city. Do we know whether or not the residents want that?
Oh, have you never been on Facebook?
I don't go on Facebook.
Okay, but that would be why.
I hate Facebook.
You're probably...
Well, clearly there are two camps.
Polarized split.
I'll just be clear, I'm in favor of it. I think the deer destroy my yard routinely, however, I reckon a lot of people are not. I'm just curious if you know how many.
He went into how city deer are not healthy deer. He said the DWR kind of already knows the numbers, and he shared that with me. We're, we're like twelve hundred percent higher than pre Elk Ridge development. Higher on the deer count.
And I'm asking one question. We pay this guy, we're making, we're making the assumption right now that we're going to go ahead and kill him. I just want to make sure the residents...
We're trying to assess...
I mean, if he does a count and decides you got fifty to me in deer or a thousand to me in deer, I mean, that's...
And what's the...
But you have to have...
How much will it cost us? We have no idea, like, did he give you a...
It'll be based on the plan.
Sure, but like, did he say, hey, in this city it was this much? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, he already told us.
Yeah, so Pleasant, he's doing Pleasant Row, he's doing control, he's doing spring bill. And on average, they're paying six to ten thousand dollars a year for the, for the deer count.
He has to come in, he sets up. He sets up.
It was planned or a city code.
I mean, it'd be cool.
And how does, how does he...
He sets up his equipment, takes his time to manage, takes his time to clean it up.
People don't even know this is going on. He picks sites that are...
Crossbones.
Very crossbones.
Crossbones, and the guy who's doing it, his name is on the arrow.
They, they have not lost an animal.
No, I'm not worried about that. I'm not, I just, I just wonder, like...
I'm sure he's highly effective. The question is, will the residents...
Right now, the city of Elk Ridge is contributing to the deer removal of the vehicles.
We are, we're doing our best.
Yeah.
Vehicles, fences.
But this was, we felt like, before we really, I feel like if we really want to get serious about anything that we do, even if it's not to do anything, we ought to know what the problem is, the size of the problem. even if it's not to do anything, we oughta know what the problem is, the, the size of the problem. Cause we might find out that we don't have a, a big problem. Might be ten deer or we might have a five hundred deer. I don't know what it is, but I think until we get that number, we don't have anything that we can even go to residents. We can't have any kind of discussion of any sort that makes any sense, right? It's all emotional at this point.
That's true.
It's emotional.
So, I.
It is, the whole side.
Yeah. I, I think that we should understand what kind of problem we have. That's the first step.
Yeah, so basically, we're, we're looking, I mean, if you want him to do it, we'd like to do it this year's budget.
Do we have any other hunters in Elk Ridge that have equipment, trail cams, or we can do the count?
They probably have to be licensed through the state.
We either give him a number or he rises a number on his own and we pay him to do that. That's the few options.
Well, and that's the only reason I'm asking is if there's somebody in town that might be like, sure, I'll count them myself. I don't know if that, how that works or what they do, but.
He said that he's, he's gonna set up, what, like twenty, thirty cameras?
So probably.
So it's like same time of the day, he takes the data from all of them so you don't have overlap and wandering. And then he does a couple drone flights just to see, but you don't.
I think that's our first step. If you don't expect to put up to six or seven, eight thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars at any point in time.
Well, that's it.
Then let's not do it at all.
Do we?
Don't wanna waste money, but I think if we're serious about it, and I think we do have a problem, right? And we oughta find out what's at the problem out there and we'll be able to have.
And like you said, they're not healthy deer.
They're not?
No.
What?
They're, they're sixty percent of the way, the, he says there's a difference between mountain deer and, and city deer.
It'll make it better for the ones that are.
And it's selective, so it's, you know, it's, it's.
I mean, that's why they hunt in the mountains.
Selected by the areas, selected by whatever. He says people don't even notice it going on.
Just the landlord would be set up their station.
Why don't we do like a survey?
So they.
Ask everyone if they're, should do.
So.
We got three thousand bucks laying around to throw at this for the, the count?
Royce told me he'd find it.
I don't wanna be the penny pincher dude on the council.
We can sue. We'll just sue for it. It's fine. We'll sue for it.
Do we have three thousand bucks?
Great money monster.
Well, I, I mean, we come up with three thousand dollars. You know, it comes down to the question, do you think we have a problem? You know, is it worth going through this procedure to understand this?
Corey, I had a neighbor hit a deer in front of my house a couple of years ago. Asked me to damage his car. He said, yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we do it a thousand.
It caused the residents.
I, I bumped three deer this year.
I mean.
Full unlock of the brakes.
I hit one on the side.
Backing out.
Legitimately, we chose to live on the side of a dog, right?
There's twelve hundred percent in count deer.
I'm with you.
Are we sure there are? I want, I want hard facts.
That's what the DNR is saying.
There are more deer now than there was.
There are, there are. There's deer crap everywhere.
We wanted to make a motion to, uh, anything under twenty-five hundred, we don't have.
But I want hard facts, not just, I think, I think I've seen one, you know?
Yeah. Forty-four ninety-nine?
Talk him down, Royce. Tell him he's gotta be below that for his count. Cause twenty-five hundred, we don't have to have council approval, right?
Yeah, but we want it done correctly, not, sometimes.
But don't, what are you implying?
Nothing, not at all. I'm just gonna shut up. I'm gonna go home.
Then do a study and you do it right.
That's what I was trying to say.
He's very proficient.
Let's not waste the money.
Then make a motion and then we go up to the three thousand.
Okay, well then I make a motion and we approve up to three thousand for urban wildlife management study.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, that's a long discussion for that. All right, financial review. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look through the finances. There's nothing that we particularly have to call out. We're tracking good, Royce?
I think we're tracking three thousand bucks.
Right? I'm not giving you discretionary money on this stuff, just so you know.
Just saying. So, this, this is kinda on a somewhat related note. Today, when Jared and I met with Commissioner Ainge, we asked about sales tax and whether or not we're getting our share of Payson's getting part of it. He said we should talk to the Utah State Tax Commission.
I have Ruby following up.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to just bring it up.
There's a lot of money slipping down.
Cause I, I really think, you know, let's, let's get some transparency there.
I mean, as Amazon's customer of the year, I guarantee you are not getting a sales tax that I'm spending.
We're not getting sales tax.
Is it based on population?
No, it's based on.
No, it's based on your zip code.
Yeah, where it's delivered.
So, Payson might be.
And when you're getting two to three boxes a day, I guarantee the city is not getting that money.
All right, back to financials. Anybody call out if you want any explanation, under further discussion? We wanna make sure that we, by law, we have to fully disclose our financials to the, to the commission, to the council. All right, remember the days when we were doing check registers?
Yes.
Even when you're doing them, I wonder why you guys are doing this. It's already a dumb.
So, yeah, on, on page ten.
Page ten.
Looks like we've got some money set aside for county hall. Is that, am I reading that right? Is there?
Yes.
Money, so we are saving for that?
Yeah, that was the plan.
We are saving for that. And this year, we actually allotted a hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was, to do some of the upfront engineering work.
It was good, I think.
No, I have to go back. Can't remember where it was. It might've been fifty.
I think it was fifty.
Cause we wanted to get some upfront work done, the, the concepts and all that stuff, which by the way, we're still working. It's a little slow right now.
So wait, the fire department hasn't spent all their money, huh?
Don't tell them that.
Don't tell Seth.
Seth knows.
We'll see that. He'll spend it down to the penny.
He's very conscientious about it, but he's great.
He's pretty good, sir.
See, and I, and I will say, the money that we have spent, or that we've allocated that has been spent, has been money well spent. It was nice to have a radio at work the other day on a fire call. It really was.
Was it sound so big?
No, it's Saturday.
So that, that old control, is that a bill from the county? I think I've asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like it always goes like two hundred percent every year. And I don't know.
I swear, every time we.[1662.65]